Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Thursday, August 29th, meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it looks like almost exclusively county staff here with a few members of the media, but just as a reminder, if anyone is out there and is planning on testifying, it's also super helpful if you sign in at the back, so if you did not do that coming in, please do so exiting, please silence cell phones. If you want to testify, we definitely want to hear from folks, but being succinct is always much welcomed, and if you can keep your comments to three minutes or so, give or take, that would be fantastic. Are there any announcements from staff at this time? Okay, seeing none. Is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? Okay, silence yet again. So, our current claims list, this would be claims received by the Commissioner's Office between August 15th and August 22nd. They total $3,178,238.24. We have a number of budget-related public hearings, which we had previously opened, and I will open those public hearings again for today. This includes our final budget public hearing for fiscal year 2020, permissive medical levy, sheriff's retirement levy, public employment, and public employees' retirement system levy, and rural special improvement districts budgets. So I think the way we're going to kick this off is that I will do a little reminder for folks how all of you in the media and county staff and member or two of the public who are here want to access your tax bill to see it online. That's always a useful exercise. Then the Commissioners will have a few introductory remarks, then we'll turn it over to Andrew Charny for our presentation today. We'll continue with public comment. And just to give you a preview, we will not be taking action today, but we will be taking action on the fiscal year 2020 budget at our admin meeting next Tuesday, which, as opposed to being located where we normally have those meetings, in room 206 of the county administrative building, that meeting will be in here, correct? Okay, same place, 10:00 AM on Tuesday, we'll take final action. So to begin with, your tax bill. So there are a few different ways through the Missoula County website where you can access your tax bill, and I will show you a couple of those ways right now. So you could either go in through this portal, and since I don't have a keyboard here, I will not enter my name or taxpayer ID, but you could enter your name here and access your tax bill that way. Alternatively, you can go to our property information system, and you can find your parcel or your lot on the map, or your neighbors if you're curious. Today, we will go to the house clad with red shingles on East Pine Street, which is my residence. There we are. Okay, indeed, that does appear to be my wife and I listed on the information associated with that parcel, so go up to the upper-left corner of this panel, click Tax, and there you have it, 508 East Pine, my wife and my name here. So one of the super handy things that our staff has done, man, that's a lot of taxes I'm paying there. Doggone, I'm getting hosed. Okay, anyway, so these pie charts, super helpful because you can see, because there's typically a lot of confusion, I think, in terms of folks get their tax bills from Missoula County, but only a portion of it funds Missoula County operations. You have other taxing jurisdictions such as schools, special districts. In my case, living within the city of Missoula, I have a portion of my taxes going to city operations. But then you can also drill down farther, and so this is pretty interesting because it not only breaks out the percentage of taxes you're paying in these various categories, but also has the dollar amount. So for last year, our county fair, which I might remind folks is free, I paid $9.38, so I think that's a pretty good value, and I would just encourage members of the public to play around with this and see what your taxes are going for, and ask yourself the question, are you getting value for what you are paying? So I think it's a super helpful, but probably very underutilized tool. Okay, I think we're good with that. And if folks in the listening public out there have any trouble accessing their tax bill online but would like to do so, we have an extremely helpful finance staff who would be more than helpful, more than helpful and more than willing to help you find your tax bill. So today's budget. This comes after many, many months of work, as it does every year, but I just want to give a big shout-out to our budget team, and particularly to Amanda and Andrew, who've done some super-heavy lifting even at the very 11th hour here to provide us with what we are presenting today. There's a couple terms that we use in a lot of what we do in county government operations here in Missoula County. Oftentimes, they're related to natural resource management or natural resource stewardship, and those terms are sustainability and resiliency, but I think those terms have equal applicability to our budget process. We want to create a budget that is sustainable. Indeed, we have revamped our budgeting process this year, and one of the components of our budget is to craft what we are calling a sustainment budget, and that is a budget that essentially delivers the same level of services that you received as a Missoula County resident in the past, and figuring out what does it cost in dollars to deliver that same level, and we call that sustainment, sustaining the same level of budget and services, or services, and how much budget will require, be required to deliver those services. But also is the notion of resiliency. We might have more ability to do things this particular year than what we are actually including in this budget, but if we do so, we might be putting ourselves at jeopardy a year, or two, or three from now, when we know there will be other costs and expenditures and obligations coming down the pike. So if we use all of our taxing bandwidth, if you will, to do things that many members of the public, and probably us included, would like to do for our community, if we do that all this particular year, we're going to really be limiting our options in the future, and also not preparing ourselves for what could be the inevitable, unexpected circumstance where either revenues don't come in as expected, or we have a downturn in the economy. So creating resiliency in our budget to respond to those unexpected situations is pretty important. This particular year, and my colleagues might have more to chime in, and certainly Andrew probably will also on this, in terms of revenue and expenditures, we do have some challenges revenue-wise. We continue to struggle with not being adequately compensated by the state of Montana for per diem rates. That is what we are being paid by the state Department of Corrections to house Department of Corrections inmates at our detention facility. We continue to do what we can to try to recoup what we are owed, and to narrow that gap between what we are owed and what we're actually being paid. We have not seen as robust a reflection of newly taxable properties and values within Missoula County. Overall, as say the city of Missoula might have realized, we've seen a number of businesses appealing their taxes, and so that diminishes our revenue to some extent, and then also, and we can certainly talk about this in greater depth if anyone wants to, challenges related to centrally assessed properties. On the expenditure side, a couple bits of really good news that you don't hear too often is that we actually paid off a couple of bonds. So the jail bond has been completely paid off, as has circa 1990s, early 2000s, open space bond, so those are good things. We also, I think we're pretty judicious and fairly modest in some of the budget requests that we granted this particular year. There's a lot of need out there, there's plenty more that I would have liked to have done, but for the sake of creating a sustainable, resilient budget for future out-years, some budget requests we actually denied this year, and indeed, some things that we have funded in the past, supporting various community initiatives, we have either frozen at the 2019, or I should say the 2020 funding levels, or, excuse me, 2019 funding levels, or we actually made some cuts in order to keep a budget that is sustainable and that does some of the other things that we would like. So with that, I'm going to stop talking and offer, if either of my colleagues, Commissioner Slotnick or Verro, have anything they want to add at this time, and then we can move into our staff presentation. Josh?
Thanks a lot, Dave. That was super complete, so there's not much left to say. You did a really good job. Thanks. And before I say my little two bits, I want to echo also what Dave said, is a huge thanks to our budget team, and to Andrew and Amanda, who worked, you could probably count them, but nobody would want to count that, countless hours, and on weekends, evenings, to get this done, so we really appreciate all the effort that you guys put in. With that, only piece I wanted to add to this is something descriptive about the course that we're on. The cost of providing services through local government increases faster than our ability to pay for those costs. The time of reckoning is basically now, and what Dave described as us preserving some of our bandwidth to generate revenue for next year and the following year is exactly accurate. We're at a point where these two lines have hit each other, and it behooves us to come up with new ways to generate revenue beyond property tax. Property tax as a tool is basically maxed out, and I'm hoping over the next year, we will come up with new ways, so that instead of limiting services, we add more revenue. As Dave has pointed out, no one clamors for a reduction in services. In fact, one of the reasons I believe Missoula has grown so well, and we continue to be a place people want to visit and move to, is because we create the foundation for a wonderful place, through all kinds of services that to most people are invisible. The fact that you walk about here and it's clean and safe and predictable, and things work well, and you have easy access to most everything you would need, the foundation for that are the services that local government provides. People stand on that foundation and create wonderful businesses and nonprofits and all sorts of things, the result of which is people move here or want to visit here. In order to keep that up, we're going to have to come up with other ways besides property taxes to generate revenue, and excited to be part of that.
Thanks. Juanita?
I'm not going to follow Commissioner Slotnick on that, so it's Charny time, so let's get on with the final budget presentation.
Okay, nice pass-off. Okay, Andrew?
Well, thank you very much. Thank you to Amanda and the entire budget team, and thank you to the Commissioners for your continued leadership and support of all our efforts. Budget process seemed like it started years ago, it actually started this spring, and we made it through the hearings in May and June, and we had our first budget hearing on July 25th. We wanted to see how much more money it would take to sustain, as we talked about, sustain our existing operations, so I didn't give an estimate on future revenue growth. We kept that flat going forward, and we tried to determine in a number of dollars how much it would cost the county to continue its operations or to enhance those operations. We received the certified values from the DOR on August 5th. Final budget reflects those updated property revenue numbers, and today we'll present that budget. Certified values increased 10.44% to $245,836 for the countywide. The disappointing part of that was that we had a decrease in newly taxable numbers, which decreased about $300,000. I've got that later in my presentation, but what it means is we have less people to share the tax burden with, and we continue to tax the people that have already been taxed, so we need more of that new taxable property to expand our tax base, and that's what was really important here. Our county-only mill levies increased 4.4% to $105,321, and the certified open space tracks pretty closely to the countywides, because it just eliminates some of the ag exemptions in the outer portions of the county, and it went to $241,949. 2019 newly taxable property was $5.9 million, as I'd mentioned, and it decreased to $5.6 million, $300,000 decrease. 2019, the county-only portion of newly taxable was $1.6 million. It decreased to $500,000, a difference of $1.1 million, or 70% decrease. By way of contrast, the city saw exceptional growth in their newly taxable properties, going up to $8.3 million, and they had a 46% increase in their URDs as well, so they may not quite well. The reappraisal of the existing residential, commercial, centrally-assessed properties, the lower newly taxable amount, and the URD growth in Missoula County combined to minimize the increase in the county's mill value to 10.44 compared to the city of Missoula's mill value, increase of 18.6%. And I think a big portion of it was really the centrally assessed this year, I'll just touch on those quickly. Those are the corporations that have portions of their holdings here in Montana. Unlike you and I, who pay on the value of our property, they pay on their income. They're based on, they value the company, and then they value the pieces of the company. They don't value the property itself, the real property, and what it's worth. And each and every year, they get decreases in their valuations. The railroads are worthless, the telecoms are worthless, utilities are all worthless, and we all know that, so continues to be an issuance in Helena that we'll have to address in the future. Total budget increase for the year, 6.4%. Of that personnel made up, 5.26%. Operations, 6.26%. Our overall tax increase, $3,867,000, 8% increase. Total voter debt service increase, and this is the open space on the park and the library, is that correct? Oh, decrease, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. Thank God. Some of the proposed budget increases for 2021, we'll list some of these. We have an additional sheriff's deputy to provide courtroom security here, one of, in a process of providing a secure courthouse environment here for our judges and all those involved here in the courthouse. One additional captain positioned out at the detention center. Four temporary clerks at Treasury Motive E to initiate a pilot program for online vehicle titles and perhaps saving us some money in future. Promotion of a chief deputy in the county attorney's office with a recent appointment to a judge, one of Kirsten's senior people. One additional building inspector, Public Works, and one additional road and bridge maintenance worker at Public Works. Other increases include equipment, I'm not going to go through all these, skid steer, pound, post-pounder, geez, I don't know, pavement management system, Moxon Lane, we're going to do the bridge replacement out there, historical museum, the Public Works Department and the museum are working together to put together a real nice parking lot program out there. curb and gutter improvements, technology, we've got a public information and citizen request, information management system that will better direct citizen requests when they come into the county, and we'll do a better job of responding to those requests in a timely manner, better job of routing those requests to the correct people. Employee application, applicant tracking software, justice piece, court of record, implementation, and more mobile court technology, and network server and storage replacement. And we have a new election center coming as well over on Russell, 104 North Russell, and we have about $200,000 of new equipment, accounting equipment, we'll be financing with that as well. Over in caps, the climate change, resiliency plan implementation, 100% clean energy transition, joint master planning with the city for the modern road area, review and implementation of Sealy-Swan County Comprehensive Plan and large format plotter printer. So while the county is actually loving less mills, we're not loving less tax dollars. We still have tax increases within those mills, but due to the, some of the, as Commissioner Stromeyer mentioned, a couple of the bond issuances coming off that created some mill reductions, so we had some increases in other areas, and overall, we ended up with a 1.74 mill decrease for your countywide taxes. To contain some of the costs, we used our cash over the required reserve levels from last year to take care of some of those one-time expenses, and there's an 8% property tax revenue increase proposed in the final budget. So last year for a taxpayer with a home of price value of $250,000, a taxpayer will pay $13.88 for essential county services. This year, you'd pay $13.64 for essential county services. That's why I'm talking about that mill, that levy is going, the number of levies going down, but that's if that taxpayer's property held at the same value. We've had an average increase of 12% in the county, so that taxpayer would actually see an increase of about $89 in their tax bill with a 12% increase in that $250,000 home. If I've confused everybody, please let me know. Permissive medical levy, we're going to go ahead and issue another permissive medical levy. This allows us to levy up to a certain amount that helps us pay for the employee portion of the medical benefits, group benefits here at the county. Retirement system, we're not, although we have a hearing for it today, we're not asking for any increased levies for the public retirement, public employee retirement system, or a sheriff's retirement system. RSID budget is approved at the same time of the county budget. Assessments will not be increased for any of the districts this year. Any improvements will be funded through savings from prior year's budgets, or through an RSID revolving loan fund. Sunset West will receive a notice in the mail this year that their assessments for increase in the water tanks, epoxy service, those costs will be covered by the revolving loan, and assessments will not change from this year. In fact, I think I just, a loan being paid off for Sunset West as well. So our recommended action is adopt the 2020 budget, 2020 RSID budget, and permissive medical levy increase at your admin meeting next Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, thank you. Before we dive into public comment, any questions right now from the Commission? Okay, this is a continuation of our public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 budget. Any public comment on the budget as proposed? Jean? And please do hit that button to turn the green light on. Excellent, thank you.
Jean Curtis, resident of Missoula County. I have property in the city limits and out in the county. I did send you a note yesterday, but I, there are a couple things. First, I'd like to thank you for all your work on preparing the budget. I know what that's like, and there's a lot that goes into it, a lot of thought. The election center is one of the things that I think is very necessary, and I look forward to that, being there for the public. But there are a couple things in the budget that I wanted to point out. One is the $100,000 to study the functionality and feasibility of joining the city in ownership of the federal building. I consider that a waste of public dollars. Number one, Mayor Hangan has been very strategic in pulling apart all the departments that we had jointly between the city and the county. The planning department used to be joint, he wanted more control and split them up. The grant department, same. So I find it interesting that he now wants to share space. The county, I know, has some space needs for sure, but I think that that building is not the one to be looking at. It has, no doubt, environmental issues, HVAC issues, leaking roofs, asbestos. It's not a welcoming building, it doesn't have any public parking, it'll cost a fortune to remodel and to heat. I would recommend that you instead invest that $100,000 in figuring out how to use one of the lots that the county strategically purchased, over next to the Risk and Benefits, for example, on Alder Street, and design, build something that fits the needs of the county's space needs. I'm also concerned about the proposed gift of land adjacent to the detention center for the housing project. I don't believe that you've had adequate public process. I've talked to people in different walks of life in this community, and it seemed like a done deal when it was announced. I know that you didn't consider it a done deal, and you consider this part of the public process, but there are several things that I believe that the community has often coveted from the county. One is land that the county owned, that one in particular. It's been eyed for several things over the years. The other is the fact that the county has looked at resiliency and sustainability for years and has taxing authority. We're not to the, the county is not to its cap in taxing, and so therefore, we're a good friend to have. The other is the community fund, that people often say, well, the county can just raise that. And I remember last winter, when there were folks who were cold, and all of a sudden, they were trying to figure out how to set up a warming center, and people were literally told, the county just changed the zoning, now go ask the county for the money. The city changed the zoning, go ask the county for the money. So those things have been coveted for a long time, and this land is one of those things. I see some value in, I see value in the programs that's being planned, and I see a lot of value and relationship to the jail in the navigation center, which had absolutely no details, so we don't really know what that means, and even 30 beds for folks who are either in the jail or coming back into the community from the prison system or some other system, but it really gives me pause to then put affordable housing next to that. I would not want to live there if I had children. I wouldn't want to live there if I was a at-risk adult myself, not knowing about the neighbors that are now concentrated there to get the services that they need. I think that you need a lot more public process. I think that you need a lot more public process in what that goes through. I remember the public process for how the jail was even located there and the things the community had a lot of opinion about. And I feel like it has been presented as a done deal and the community hasn't come Land, of course, is the biggest driver. I know that we don't want to expand our jail, but we don't know what the needs are in the future and that land should be, was paid for by the taxpayers for public use and I think it should be saved for that. Lastly, I'm concerned about several requests in this budget that transfer county tax dollars to the city's identified needs. The liaison, landlord liaison, I know it's through Homeward, but it's, it's going to help folks that are in the city. It focuses on services and facilities in the city. It should be on our city tax dollars. I'm not against it. It shouldn't be spread countywide. It isn't going to help somebody in Condon. It's not going to help somebody in Lolo. It's going to help people that are here that have, need services here. I was involved in the tenure plan to end homelessness from the inception. I attended many meetings for a couple of years while we worked on that. I support the work. But the county contract with the city has always referred to forming a governance group with county representation to oversee the work and that has never happened. So if you're going to give money to the coordinator for the plan to end homelessness, make them follow through. Set up that governance group so that the county has a voice there. It's never happened. Again, it mostly benefits people in the city. New this year is the allocation of $50,000 for a winter shelter in the city. The city doesn't have a winter shelter plan. They don't have a facility. That coming out of the cold that we did last winter was, I mean, it was admirable, but it was cold in the daytime too. So that's not a solution to have people just hanging out around the Salvation Army and going in there at night. It has to be bigger. There's not much detail. I looked in the city and the county budget, but again, it benefits people within the city, not people in Lolo, Sealy Lake, French Town. So they're all good things. I just question why they're in the county's budget and not in the city's budget. I understand wanting to be part of the solution, but I think that because you are the good friend and you are the ones with the more money and you have a little more taxing authority, I think you're being taken advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on the fiscal year 2020 budget? Okay, seeing none. We will reconvene for this budget hearing and to actually adopt the fiscal year 2020 budget again in this room, 10:00 AM next Tuesday during our admin meeting. Is there any other business to come before the commission today? Okay, believe it or not, seeing none. We will be adjourned.